Good morning. We will begin our meeting with the invocation. James Greiner, Councilman Greiner, will lead us in the invocation and then Councilman Stonecifer will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Please pray with me. Dear God, thank you for today. Thank you for all the things that you've given us. I thank you especially for putting us in this city. I thank you for all the staff members that have put in a lot of hours putting together our budget. I pray that you'd give everybody wisdom today and that our conversation would be fruitful and glorify you. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
(inaudible) allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will call the meeting to order and recess the council meeting and then convene the Finance Committee meeting. And we'll begin with the budget, the overview of the budget.
And Doug Dollar is here to give us a repeat a little bit of what he gave us last week and fill in a few more details.
Yeah, so this is just kind of a little recap of what we went over last week. Again, as we look at the overall proposed budget, we're totaling $1,377 million. And again, when you look at those different categories, you see some very different growth rates. General fund down slightly at $404.5 million. The other operating funds up 1.7 percent, $238 million. And then, as I noted last week, the big jump that we saw in the MAPS III sales tax fund is what's driving that non-operating funds increase there. MAPS III sales tax fund is projected to, or their budget is going to grow by over $100 million. And again, that fits with the pattern that we've had of cash funding our projects. Next year, there are a number of big projects that will be in process all at the same time. One of the things that I noted last week was just the level of the general fund budget in FY18 is very similar to what we had in FY14. And I just wanted to put on a little graph here just to kind of show you where we've been over the last several years. These were the original proposed budgets in each of the last several years. And you can see we're just within 1 percent of where we were in FY14 for this proposed budget for FY18. One thing I wanted to note, we didn't have, this was kind of a last-minute change that's not in your proposed book, but we'll be bringing this to you when we bring the final adopted budget back before you. We've got a change that we're proposing, that's going to be proposed in the municipal courts operation to eliminate the marshal's office. There are 11 positions within courts that provide that service. Police is going to take over that function and they'll be adding a lieutenant and eight officers to provide court enforcement services. The cost for that program will then shift from municipal courts to police. Obviously, the chief will talk a little bit more about that in their presentation in a couple of weeks.
But a shifting of positions, but really a net zero in the budget.
Right. It's no change in cost between the two positions there in courts and police. And that change, because we now lose a couple of positions going from 11 in courts to nine in police, you can see that changes our position count just slightly. We're now down 18 positions, 0.4 percent for a total of 4,642 positions. And that's down, you know, 101 positions from where we were a couple of years ago. And in addition, we have the 69 positions that are frozen in police and fire. And as we look at police, this graph I showed you last week changes slightly. Again, with these addition of nine positions for courts, we now have an offset to the eight positions that they were deleting. So we're now actually a plus-one on uniform positions compared to what we are in the current year. But again, there are 48 positions that are frozen and are not funded in police. As we turn now to the revenues, again, the big picture, $1,377 million. Sorry, I'm stumbling over the big numbers there. The sales tax and taxes, taxes generally are our largest recurring revenue source and they total 508 million or about 38 percent of total. And of that, of course, sales tax is the biggest at $411 million of the total. Taxes in this category also includes our debt service fund and the property taxes that go to pay off of our general obligation bonds. I won't go through the other sources there as well. Again, just to note, again, the MAPS III fund balance is so significant in this current year, we've been saving up those funds to cash fund the projects and now it's time to spend those dollars. And you can see that's a significant piece of our total revenue. When we move into the general fund, again, sales tax dominates the pie chart here with 52.5 percent, about $212 million in sales tax for the general fund. Other taxes include use tax and, as I noted last week, amazon.com, their remittances will come to us under use tax because they're an out-of-state company remitting here to Oklahoma. We've got the other categories there. Franchise fees are significant. That's the fees that come from utility companies to pay us for their use of our right-of-ways. That's 10.2 percent. Fines at $21.9 million are about 5.4 percent of general fund revenue. Fees and charges such as building permits and administrative charges and such make up about 18 percent of the total. And then our other revenue is relatively insignificant, 1.6 percent. Those are interest and other miscellaneous revenue sources. So again, just kind of providing a recap on the expenditure budget. Again, MAPS III is the biggest piece of our budget next year and really changes the way this graph looks. Normally, personal services is the largest cost within the city operations, but again, because MAPS III is growing, personal services becomes a slightly smaller piece there than the total. But as we look at the general fund, now you really see personal services, people are what power the general fund and that makes up 73.4 percent of the total. Other services at 20 percent includes utilities, contracts for services, our payments to COTPA, charge backs, other sorts of things like that. And supplies transfers, a relatively small piece at 6.6 percent. And again, when we look at expenditures by service area, public safety is the majority of the expense at 64.6 percent. General government, 8.5 percent. Public services at 17.3 percent. And then culture and recreation, the smallest piece there, or the second smallest piece at 9.6 percent. Again, that's the Parks and Recreation and Operation of the Cox Convention Center and Chesapeake Energy Arena. So again, just to revisit the schedule here, we've got Development Services, Public Works, Public Transportation and Parking today. In two weeks, we'll have IT, Police and Fire, and then airports, parks and utilities with adoption scheduled then for June 13th and the start of the fiscal year. And during each of these meetings, we'll have a chance for public comment as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and if you don't have any, then we'll start off with the department presentations.
You mentioned Amazon. There's going to be a time in near future where Amazon is going to remit to us a check for those sales that were made through Amazon out of state that the product has come into Oklahoma City, correct?
That's correct. And those-
It actually showed up on the May use tax. You haven't seen that yet, but we got the May sales and use tax check last, or numbers last week and it's in there.
Okay, so what it's going to show, that report is going to show the use tax figure being increased by several million dollars.
Yes.
Okay. In the past, that million dollars would have gone into the general fund as sales tax.
Yes.
But it's temporarily residing in use tax.
Which goes to the general fund.
And then it's going to, we're going to be able to transfer that. My question is, can we take that money, put it in the general fund and use it as a general fund dollar, just like every other sales tax?
All general fund use tax now works that way. It goes to the general fund as general fund dollar.
The use tax goes 1 percent, 1 cent goes to the MAPS III use tax fund that we're using for police and fire fleet replacement, and then the remainder goes to the general fund.
And so the Amazon money will go into the general fund and will be available for expenditure just like a sales tax dollar?
Yes.
Thank you all.
One thing I was unclear on, as far as this Amazon agreement is concerned, is that limited to Amazon products, not other products that they distribute?
Right. So if they have, if a third party is selling through the Amazon platform, they don't have to remit the use tax unless they choose to. So only the products that Amazon is fulfilling directly will they-
So we still have work to be done.
Yeah. The estimates are that that's about half of what they sell on Amazon is their own products and about half are third-party resellers.
Thank you.
So just how, do you know the amount that was in the May use tax from Amazon?
We won't know the specific amount that comes in from Amazon because it's, we just don't get individual breakdowns on that. But I can tell you that the use tax in May was up about half a million dollars. But that could be, I'm sure Amazon's part of it, I don't know that it's all. Because actually, the sales tax was up a little bit too.
Thank you, Doug.
All right. We'll start with our budget, our departmental presentations and up first is Eric Weiner with Public Works.
Morning. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Pull up our presentation. So as I kind of make introductions, obviously, our department is very collaborative and with us today, I've got Debbie Miller, our Assistant Public Works Director. I've got Mike Miller, who's our financial specialist and one that's really assisted in getting our budget together this year. And a lot of work from other division heads. And then we've also got Ms. Shannon Cox with us, who's helped put our presentation together and get it organized so that we could present to you this morning. So my appreciation goes out to our department getting everything ready. As we look at the 2017, 2018 proposed budget, you'll find these beginning on your page, C155. Now, the budget book this year has two sections and so you'll find the primary budget on C155 and the following pages, but you'll also see a lot of the LFR measures and they begin on G131. So Public Works is found in two portions of your book this year. When we look at Public Works, Public Works is the fourth largest department in the city. And as we look at our mission statement, to provide infrastructure, construction and maintenance, private construction review and inspection, emergency first response services to the public so they can live, work and play in a safe and functional environment. Public Works' primary purposes are to construct roads, bridges and drainage facilities. We also do quite a bit of capital improvements in the way of facilities and buildings, which I'll show as a part of the presentation. But we still play a vital role in first response services, much just like what we did about two weeks ago with a lot of severe storms and wind that affected Oklahoma City. We're made up of eight divisions, administration being one of those, but seven primary engineering divisions of engineering, stormwater, field services, project management, river, traffic management, and then streets, traffic and drainage maintenance. And I'll go over each of these as a part of the presentation. So our budget is predominantly staff and I think, following up on what you've seen, we've got $47.3 million that accounts for 386 positions in Public Works. Now, the budget, if you look on the page, will actually be $89.9 million, but that also includes a significant amount of capital that's also included in our budget. And those things take care of stormwater, utility, grants, some CIP funds, special purpose funds, and then also the new impact fees. And so we'll be administering those. But when we look back at our budget of $47.3 million, you'll see the breakdown by division here on the proposed budget, 1718. And the largest that you'll see is $23.7 million in our streets, traffic and drainage maintenance program. We look at our major budget changes for this year. So these are three of the primary areas. Funding for street maintenance materials has increased by $250,000. This, of course, goes towards the citizens' comments in the survey of streets being a number one priority and the quality of city streets, so we've actually seen an increase in that one area. When we look at the different positions, we've actually moved six positions from the general fund to the drainage utility. So there is actually no net change in Public Works and positions, but we are moving away from the general fund and working towards other funding sources. We've also added funding for the maintenance of repairs at the household hazardous waste facility as a part of this budget this year. We break down our budget, this is what it looks like. So of the 47.3, and again, this goes towards personal services, you'll see that streets, traffic and drainage maintenance make up the majority of the department at over 50 percent. But you'll see the breakdown in the other divisions as well with stormwater quality, administration, Oklahoma River, project management, field services, and also engineering. This, again, does not include any of the capital budget that I previously mentioned. This is our operating budget for this upcoming year. So one of the things that we look at, and this is just a fact sheet that we like to present, that just shows a lot about Public Works and telling our story. In Oklahoma City, we're very familiar with the 621 square miles of area, but inside Oklahoma City, that's over 12,400 traffic signals, 53 miles of drainage channel that are maintained, over 8,000 lane miles of road, 70,000 traffic control signs and 750 signalized intersections. And so this really is what keeps the department very busy maintaining a lot of the city's infrastructure. As we move into the engineering division, and this will be the first of the seven divisions that I present, the budget for this individual division is $1.7 million. It's 18 positions and it comprises of drainage engineering, paving engineering and technical review. These are traditionally our engineers and so these are when we're addressing drainage projects and paving or technical reviews where we actually review a lot of the private plan developments. Anything that occurs in the right-of-way, may not necessarily be a city project, but something that occurs within the street right-of-way, driveways, utilities, all those things. This is reviewed by this division. Project Management is our second division that I'm presenting budget is $2.6 million at 28 positions. Project Management is probably our largest staff-driven division with infrastructure project management. This will be our geo-bond program, facilities project management, contract administration and right-of-way. When we talk about the 2007 bond issue, which is our current bond issue with over $760 million total, $497 million of that in streets, we're now at about 70 percent, 70 percent either complete or under construction on the streets portion of the geo-bond program. This comprises of about 136 locations. But we also are doing projects with drainage, traffic, bridges, parks, police, fire. They're about 60 percent complete in those areas and the final sale for the 2007 is still projected in 2019. So as we're looking ahead and we're in the midst of planning the 2017 bond issue, the reason for the 2017 plans being made is because this 2007 is going to be finishing up here in just the next few years.
You mentioned the addition of a construction project manager to help oversee the geo-bond projects. Can you explain that oversight and how that's going to facilitate the 2007 bond project?
Absolutely. One of the advantages that we have with project management is this, we do additional geo-bond projects, we're able to use the geo-funds to actually provide for project management. So as we increase the number of geo-projects, we will increase the number of project managers. As we anticipate these increases in this next year, we're adding staff. And so they'll be directly responsible for projects like these, whether they're street widening projects. Once a contract is negotiated with an engineer, that project manager will work with that contract to get the plans developed, meet with the community in certain cases, prepare the plans for bidding, but then they'll also oversee the project all the way through construction and work with a contractor until it's complete. So individual managers can have sometimes as many as 20 different projects at a time that they're managing, but they'll be in various phases. Some will be just beginning, some might be in the middle of design and then others will be in construction. This is example of street widening projects, which we've done several in Oklahoma City. This happens to be Western Avenue from 164th to 178th. This is a $7.2 million project that was completed last year. And again, as we look at the 2007, the 2007 included sidewalks to be included on at least one side of the street. This project also included a bridge and some other infrastructure components as well. We have a lot of residential resurfacing that's in the 2007 and we're actually increasing the number of resurfacing projects. This is Bryant to Coltrane, Memorial, north to the city limits. It's residential resurfacing. And again, we're adding sidewalks even in the residential areas, not just the arterial. This was a $1.5 million project. This is an additional arterial resurfacing on Classen from Northwest 16th to Northwest 23rd. Now, it had some existing sidewalks and so we actually did a lot of sidewalk repairs and ADA enhancements. So in some cases, we're able to take advantage of the existing infrastructure, but again, as we work towards resurfacing and improving those street conditions citywide. And then we also move into streetscape projects. And so this is a portion of the streetscape on Northwest 23rd, west of Interstate 44 that was completed. This is near Utah, part of Phase 1. It was a $3 million phase. But in these cases, you'll find that we're upgrading traffic signals and lighting. We're also able to put in district markers. It's very hard to see this marker in this photo on screen, but it's off to the right that you'll see there in the green area where it identifies a portion of the district. Then we've had some other streetscape projects that have come online as well, which is the Western Avenue Streetscape from 41st to 45th. And again, these would go more towards the streetscapes like we've seen where they're complete makeovers, like Project 180, where we've worked very heavily with business owners in recreating spaces like this one. So in addition to project management, we talk about the infrastructure projects, we have a number of facilities projects that are also part of our project management team. The Intermodal Hub that's currently under construction at a cost of $28 million is one of those typical projects where we're looking at facility renovations, but in this case, we're actually coordinated with Project 180. There's grant funds that are involved, there's bond funds that are involved, there's MAPS III funds that are involved. And so when it comes to project management, it's organizing all of those details and having these projects seen through completion. In the update for the Intermodal Transit Hub, work has proceeded very quickly. It's expected to finish up the majority of the improvements this summer. On the right-hand side of this frame, I've shown the pedestrian connection, which will be a tunnel through the railroad tracks that's not yet completed. We're still working with the railroad and hoping to start that construction later this year. But that will connect Bricktown to Downtown once the project's complete. There are other projects like the Municipal Courts, which is currently under construction. This contract was awarded in the summer of 2015 at an estimated cost of $22 million. Considerable work's been done and it's anticipated to be completed this summer. And then another project would be Capitol Hill Library. So not all of the projects are really large. This is a significant project though, with a large remodel and addition, began in July of 2016. It's anticipated to be completed next summer, in summer of 2018, at a cost of $4.2 million. And then lastly, we talk about Project 180. We're in the final phases of Project 180. Again, we, this is a combination of infrastructure and facilities. There's been a lot of park work, there's been a lot of road work, pedestrian enhancements, taking care of landscaping and a lot of downtown furniture. Package 8, which is the final package, is going out to bid, anticipated to start summer of '17 and finish up in about the next six to nine months. And so we'll be working that towards completion as well. So when we look at the LFR measures, and I mentioned the budget book does have two sections, you know, we do track performance very closely. And so this is the dollar value of bond projects awarded and we set annual goals every year on the amount of expenditure that we're looking to see. We've averaged over the past several years about $70 million in construction. And so we're on target to complete that again this year, but one of the things that's quickly changing is the availability to sell additional bond funds is going to increase. And so beginning this year, $90 million was sold and we'll actually start increasing our LFR goals to put more in place very quickly. So we will be raising that goal from 70 to 75 million this year. And as the bond sales increase by approximately $5 million each year, we're also going to be increasing about $5 million in output each year, which then goes back towards the increase in project managers and staffing to make sure that those projects are seen through. Again, we refocus on the 2007. The final sale for the 2007 is anticipated in 2019, but at which time, we do hope that the 2017 will be successful later this fall. And we'll simply be merging and blending those funds and moving forward with finishing the 2007, but then starting the 2017.
Eric, can I, why are we able to sell $5 million more each year? Is that just property values or is there?
Generally speaking, yes. The city is growing and we're seeing increased net assessed values. So the mileage has been maintained the same. We have not increased taxes, but simply the growth of the city has allowed for higher net assessed values and more money to be sold.
Okay.
We're going to move on to our third division, which is the river. And I think, you know, the river is one of those that is increasing also in needs. It includes the dams, the SCADA system, which is the supervisory, control and data acquisition. It's the communications of the river that make everything work and then river maintenance. The budget is $1.7 million and there's seven positions for our river. And this is just a typical photo that we see on a good weather day of the Eastern Avenue Dam. We see a lot of recreation, a lot of activity, trails, the Boathouse District, OU Rowing in the Western Basin. We see a lot of service by M-Bark and the River Cruisers. And so most of what Public Works does is support all of the functions and making sure that the river stays full with the three low-water dams, making sure that we are completing activities with maintenance. And then, of course, after storms like we saw two weeks ago, begin cleaning the debris and making sure that it's accessible for all the recreationalists in the area. We have begun construction and will hopefully finish this summer, a new river maintenance facility that's located at the Exchange Landing. This is a rendering of what that new building will look like on the left. It will store a lot of the replacement parts for the dam systems. It'll also house some of the boats that we use to access the river. On the right is one of the barges that we use to actually clean the debris from the river. It has a rotating scoop on the front with a conveyor belt and it picks that trash up out of the river, allows us to then offload it at one of the ramps to then have it landfilled. But we're obviously busy with those activities right now. Moving to our fourth division, Field Services, and this is our construction inspection, quality assurance program. It's also our surveying crew. It's $4.2 million at 49 positions and these individuals go out daily and are the ones that are doing all the inspections for any of the work that you see in the right-of-way. So whether it's new water lines, sewer lines, driveway approaches, they also do facilities inspections as well. They're ensuring ADA compliance on sidewalks. They're very busy. And some of the programs that we look at, they are responsible for the utility cut repairs that we sometimes find after a water line breaks in the street. So they manage that process very closely. You'll see a number of the measures that are here. Our goal is that 80 percent complete of utility cuts are completed within 30 days. You'll see that we're currently tracking about 61 percent. We have seen a number of water line breaks this year. We've actually changed our repair method a little bit where it used to be a two-step method. When we had a water line break before, we had a temporary patch that was put into place and it might be up to 30 days to have it completed. We're able to get in a little bit quicker. We're also able to combine the final repair into one step. We're using concrete, high early strength concrete patches now that are allowing a crew to go out one time to make that permit repair instead of twice. Before they put a concrete base and then an asphalt cap in a street, we're going completely concrete and it's actually improving our efficiencies. And so we expect to get much closer to that 80 percent here in the next few months. Moving on to our next division, our fifth division, which is stormwater quality. This is our environmental water quality, our household hazardous waste, our construction industrial permitting and also public outreach, $3.2 million at 28 positions. And this is our household hazardous waste facility. I think it's probably, hopefully not a secret anymore. It's a fantastic facility. It's located at 1621 South Portland. It's open to the public. We do invite those to please use this. It's only closed on Sunday and Monday, but it's an opportunity to keep a lot of household hazardous waste out of the waste stream and going into the landfill. In 2016, we actually held two special collections in addition to this facility and collected over 60,000 pounds of waste with over 324 participants at the two special collections. At the facility, we had nearly 10,000 participants that collected over 700,000 pounds of waste last year. 96,000 pounds of the waste were actually in a like-new condition, so we're able to redistribute those and recycle those. If you go to the facility and you make a donation of, say, used oil or any of your household hazardous waste products, you have the ability to then go into the household hazardous waste store. You can take several items that are basically new on the shelf at no cost and that's a part of our recycling program. So just if you'll go make a small donation of a waste, you can take new items. And this includes everything from cleaning supplies to pool chemicals to pesticides and just household cleaners as well. This is our special collection event. We actually were scheduled to have this two weeks ago when we had the severe storms at the fairgrounds, but due to the weather, we have rescheduled this event for June 24th. And so there'll be some announcements. But this is where we actually do special collection where we can actually take waste that we don't take at the household facility, which include medications, ammunition, tires and some other things. And so if you have any of those specialty items, we encourage the public to come to our special collection event. And again, that'll be on June 24th. We have a significant amount of public outreach as a part of our stormwater quality program. And I think I've introduced Wayne Drop. It's our character that's in this photo that you see. He actually visits a number of Oklahoma City public schools and we actually try to get to the youth very quickly and soon, teach them about not dumping and doing things with the sewers and creek management. But you'll see on the right-hand side, the stormwater quality outreach program, we hold a number of workshops. We've had over 2,000 attendees at workshops. We've actually already addressed over 2,300 students and school site visits. We have 22 subscribers, 2,200 subscribers to our newsletter and we're out on social media with almost 300,000 views. And then I mentioned our household hazardous waste event where we had over 300 participants. Moving on to our sixth division, which is our largest, our Streets, Traffic and Drainage Division. This is $23.7 million and 222 positions. So our Streets Division makes up about half of the entire department. They're responsible for streets, drainage, traffic operations and graffiti removal. And one of the factors that we track, again, we go back to the citizen survey and we understand that the quality of city streets is the number one priority. We monitor this very closely and we've actually declined yet another year in citizen satisfaction. You know, we're alarmed by this and it's something that we're working to address. And as we increase the number of street projects, and I mentioned in the bond program, we're actually moving towards more resurfacing projects than we have historically. actually moving towards more resurfacing projects than we have historically, both residential and arterial. We know that we're making a difference in the streets. I would suggest that, and it's really the comment that I made last year, because we have a lot of construction underway and it's inconvenient, that some of the survey results may be based on just inconvenience due to driving, construction, sometimes that takes longer than anticipated, and just delays that we're actually just getting just perception from the public. So we are continuing to focus on this, and this is a measure that we're going to track very closely until we see improvement. On the residential streets, we also are seeing the same, but we have a higher level of approval from the citizens, but it is, again, on a decline. We're hoping to improve this the same. And again, we're going to start doing a lot more resurfacing with residential beginning this year. So we talk about payment condition indexes, and this is a PCI number, and I know the council's very familiar. We've actually increased the PCI generally one point every year, and that's evidence from the construction. So about five years ago, we were down near a 62. We're up to a 65. We've set a short-term goal to get that to a 70. And with more construction, we simply are going to continue to increase this number. However, we still have streets that are in the 30s. We have other streets that are in the 100s. And so obviously, our goal is to improve a lot of the needs of the city, hopefully with this next bond issue, which is going to be vitally important to making sure that we proceed with additional street construction. The other portion of our streets program is the maintenance of city streets, not just the new construction. So we do lots of repairs. We actually do some in-house resurfacing, this thin lay. We're beginning to contract this as well, pothole patching and railroad maintenance. This is an example of a lot of those projects that are underway daily by the streets crews. And so you'll see a lot of resurfacing. Those who are in the top photos, you'll see a lot of our pothole patching, which we're actually starting to do advanced repairs on a lot of the patches. If we're in emergency mode, we do quickly fill a pothole just to make sure that it's not a hazard. When we fill a pothole after a recent rain, it probably won't last very long. But crews, like you'll see on the lower-left-hand photo, they'll actually be able to get back out once it's in drier weather and make a more permanent patch. And that's what you see. We also do a lot of railroad maintenance in Oklahoma City. So not all streets are paved. We do have a lot of chip seal, and there are actually a few gravel roads still in Oklahoma City in our rural areas. Now, one of the things is we speak to a lot of the maintenance, and we talk about the bond issue. Something that I might note, there is also a potential sales tax proposal that's being considered by the city council. It's something that I know staff is prepared to present to the council here at the end of the month. For us to continue with programs like these, with additional resurfacing and additional projects, that sales tax proposal really is important. And so just to give you an idea of some of the figures and things that could help supplement the Public Works budget through additional contracting, if it were a one-cent sales tax proposal at $240 million, as we've talked about, and if a three-quarter portion of that went towards a streets program, it would account for about $180 million of new work. Now, that wouldn't just be streets. It would also include sidewalks, trails, bike lanes, and street enhancements. But if we were to focus approximately 70% of that fund, about $126 million towards resurfacing, we could actually go about another 420 miles of street resurfacing in Oklahoma City. So again, as we talk about sales taxes and not just general fund and bond issues, there's a tremendous opportunity, I believe, that we can actually advance a lot of the streets' discussion with repairs, resurfacing, and street enhancements through the sales tax, should that be something the council wish to consider later this month. We also look to complete our pothole repairs, 80% pothole repair within three working days. And that number has steadily increased, and so we've actually had a lot of crews available to do this. There are about 13 crews that go out daily to do pothole repairs. Now, one of the things that's been helpful is we've not had the big rains this year that we've had in previous years. And so actually, the total number of potholes is down slightly, so that's good.
Or severe winters.
Exactly. So things have been good, but we're actually completing our repairs very quickly right now, and we're very close to our 80% goal. And then traffic operations is part of our streets program. They provide a lot of the signal maintenance. So this would be just restoring burnt-out bulbs, constructing new signal lights. This is also the restriping of a lot of our city streets. Then moving into traffic management, which is our seventh division, this is, again, an administrative division that reviews plans and traffic studies. They also oversee the traffic commission, but they provide speed studies, activity and work zone permits throughout the city. The budget's $1.4 million with 14 positions. We've completed the intelligent traffic and transportation system, and we've talked about the ITS a number of times. And this is just a map I'm putting up to just kind of show the expanse of that system. So this is, with every red triangle that you see on that drawing is one of the 750 signalized intersections. We're actually beginning to work on the original 18 corridors, which you'll see with the different lines that are shown here. We've talked about class and boulevard a lot, but we're actually working on additional coordination with these new controllers citywide. And so we're reaching out with the availability of the software and the hardware to help improve a lot of the commute times and the drivability of a lot of our major city streets. So the system's really gone into use and replaced a lot of aging hardware and software, but we're actually using it to our benefit. It's actually what's going to be instrumental in making sure that the street car and bus system in Oklahoma City receives certain levels of prioritization as they come into signals and into heavy traffic. So this is my final slide as a part of our presentation, and we very much look at our year past and things that we can do to improve our year going forward. But some of the things that are projected and things that we can count on in this next year is we could have as many as 80,000 potholes repaired in this upcoming year, just based on our average from last year. Hoping that number's a little bit lower, and again, if the weather's cooperative, we might see a lower number. 86 miles of street resurfacing is anticipated this upcoming year, 20 miles of new residential sidewalk. We still are seeing growth in Oklahoma City when we talk about private development, so we are expecting about 400 infrastructure plans reviewed, and these would be a lot of the private projects that we see. 75 million goal is our goal for the 2007 bond issue. 52 million in facilities. We'll probably complete around 35,000 inspections this year from a right-of-way perspective, and that is going to be at a value of about $300 million. Now, that's not city money, but that would be estimated value of private monies inspected by city inspectors. So with that, that does wrap up our budget presentation for this morning, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have about Public Works.
Just one, you mentioned the, sorry, sales tax initiative. If there was three-quarters of a penny, that would translate into how many miles of resurfacing?
So if the one-penny tax had a three-quarter apportionment towards projects, that would generate approximately $180 million projected. If 70% of that-
Based on 27 months.
Based on 27 months. If 70% were allocated directly to streets, it would receive approximately $126 million, which would allow us to do about 420 miles of resurfacing.
So if you did half a cent, you just do the math. So you're taking 70% and putting it towards resurfacing, 30% towards sidewalks, trails, bike enhancements?
Just as a, just as a-
Ballpark.
What would numbers look like if we were to do something like that?
Gotcha.
So, I mean, those obviously have not been established, but looking forward as to how much impact could three-quarters of a cent have on infrastructure? Absolutely. And so some of the other, if we were to look at sidewalks at about 10%, that would generate about $18 million. That's really comparable to doing the MAPS III program again, and so that would do about 50 miles of new sidewalk. So, I mean, obviously, a huge impact for three-quarters of a penny.
And then the other 20%, just for discussion purposes, would be trails and bike enhancements?
Bike lanes and street enhancements, yes, I think are the other categories.
Street enhancements, trails-
Bike lanes.
Okay. All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
On the outlook, $300 million value in annual inspections. I'm not sure I understand that. Can you explain it to me?
Yeah, I wonder whether I should put that up there. I think one of the things that we talk about doing a lot of inspections every year, I don't know that it's always understood what the value of those inspections are. So when we're inspecting things like private work, whether it's new 7-Eleven and new Brahms, it might be a new residential. It may be a new hotel-type development. So we're expecting on the value of private inspections that we'll do in the $300 million range.
So is that from an ad hoc perspective or what?
No, I wouldn't say that. So when a permit is pulled in our office and inspections are assigned and permit fees are calculated, they're based on the value of the work to be inspected. That's simply the value that's submitted to us from the private developer.
I understand.
Yeah.
I think you've addressed staffing to some extent, but are you comfortable that the staffing levels are adequate, assuming the 2017 bond issue does pass? I'm sorry. You've talked about staffing levels, but let's, you know, assuming that we pass the 2017 bond issue, are you comfortable with the staff levels that you have to manage those projects? Or will we look at adding managers, as you said, through the new bond issue?
We would add additional managers for the new bond issue dollars that would come into play. So as the number of projects increases and then that amount of funds increases, we would literally add number of project managers to address that work.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are you, are you confident if we added the $126 million over the 27 months, are you confident that we could get that amount of work done in that 27 months?
So we've already started the conversation with our local contracting communities, our paving contractors primarily, knowing that it is a significant amount of work. They understand that it's there. I think one of the examples that I'll share, we recently just did a project that came to this council about a week ago. We started increasing the value of our construction higher, higher number of contract dollars. We had a $4.3 million project that we did that came in under budget. The things that were positives, we're typically averaging three to four bidders for a typical street project. This last Tuesday, there were nine bidders. Seven of them were under the budget. And so what we've seen with kind of repackaging these projects is a new interest in a lot of the contractors. We think we have the opportunity to develop projects that are for our smaller contractors, our mid-sized contractors, but clearly, a lot of the larger contractors are ready to bid city work as well. So my confidence is high in the conversations that we've started, and I think it's also evidenced by the recent bids that they're ready to take on additional work.
I think Todd brings up a critical point, and I think it goes to some of my concern about using all of the three-quarters of a penny for streets. That means nothing for public transit, nothing for park amenities, nothing for anything else. Putting all of it into streets as opposed to half a penny instead of a three-quarters of a penny. If you did half a penny and you did your same 70% calculation, that would be 84 million in resurfacing, on top of the $650 million we would have in the pipeline from the GEO bond in 27 months. And I'm wondering if we really, in that 27 months, could, would there be a difference between 84 million for resurfacing and 126 million in that 27 months? Because then, at the end of the 27 months, you'd have another MAPS, and you could do this again. So the trade-off is another 42 million of resurfacing, but the loss is anything to parks, anything to transit, anything to anything else. And I'm wondering, you know, is there a difference in that 27 months between 84 million for resurfacing and 126 million?
So as we also are planning the 2017 bond issue, the 2017 includes all components of city infrastructure, including parks, including transit, including all the other needs of the city. So I think from my perspective and actually wrapping up some of the planning documents, there's a lot of work in the 2017 that's planned, not just in streets, but also those other areas. About 50% of the 2017 bond issue streets, the other 50% is all the other categories. From a sales tax perspective, and just speaking just through some general numbers, we're just looking at the citizens' comments, the citizens' survey, and saying that streets and the quality of city streets is their number-one priority. So the numbers I present today are just for informational, really, and as maybe just a tool to show how far we could get with streets if that money was made available. Just trying to address it as quickly as possible. And also, the sales taxes being able to be remitted monthly will help us contract a lot more quickly than the bond issue will as well.
In the survey that we did that was 4,400 people, parks was basically right there with streets. It was second highest. I mean, it was basically right at the same level. But again, to this point of would there be a difference between 84 million approved through the sales tax and 126 million in that 27 months? Can contractors do that much more in that 27 months?
You know, I'm projecting. I don't know for sure, but I speculate, based on our conversations, the answer is yes, they can do the work. I believe they're ready to bring in crews, but they need the dollars and they need the contracts before they're going to relocate the crews. They're not going to bring the crews and wait for the contracts. They're going to bring the crews when the contracts are available. But I believe the answer is yes, they're ready to ramp up.
And if it's not 27, it could be 30 or 32 months before. It isn't like it's going to not-
Again, if we were to go back to the bid from last Tuesday, if every one of those contractors and their numbers were very, very good, we only had one contract and there were nine bidders. The contract ended up being about a $4 million contract. So that's 30 million in work that was ready for contracting had we had nine contracts ready to go. So just as an example, we're starting to see them already increasing their interest, and I think that they're probably ready to do the work if we had the contracting ready as well.
The other issue that I don't think I've heard is that if there are too many construction projects going on at the same time, we risk frustrating the public because they don't have any way of avoiding the construction because there's, every street around them is a blocker.
I understand. These are, we're not, most of this is going to be resurfacing and not rebuilding the streets and not widening the streets.
Right.
So they'll be pretty quick.
That's true. Yeah, and which will definitely be helpful. But, I mean, we already get that from people as it is, and so we, I mean, I want to ramp it up as much as possible, but if we ramp it up too much, it will be-
I think the other thing that we also see as a benefit, should the tax be used for a proportion of streets, is not every street under the tax also gets a sidewalk. It really is just the street. Even on our resurfacing projects in the '07, one of our biggest challenges is installing the sidewalk through a neighborhood as opposed to just resurfacing the sidewalk or resurfacing the street in the neighborhood. We'll be a lot more efficient if it's just the street and not the sidewalk as well.
I think James raises a good point as far as convenience is concerned and drivers having to deal with all the construction. But the most important thing I hear from you today is we had nine bidders. They're coming in under budget. This is an ideal time to construct when costs are down.
I believe so. And again, we'd like to get more contracts out there to confirm that, but last week was good news, so.
I would also say with the state suspending their highway and turnpike projects, there'll be a surplus of contractors wanting to-
Right. There's a very-
Keep the crew busy.
Very, it's very possible that those that have been focusing on state work could be able to do city work.
I think it is promising that we're able to potentially get some of this work done faster, because I have several general obligation projects in Ward 7, for example, that we awarded the contract sometime last year, and the work has not started yet. So that's a big concern for us, Ward 7, and making sure that we get these projects done in a more faster pace than before.
So one of the strategies that I would share with you is we get asked, you know, how would you implement such projects? And one option that we're considering, and it's working on our thin-lay resurfacing right now, is that instead of bidding a project-by-project basis, we can actually bid what we'll call a unit price or an annual contract, possibly with multiple contractors. What it allows us to do then, instead of doing individual bids, we actually are simply writing work orders. We simply need a street done. We write the contractor work order. He completes that work as long as we stay within the total value of the contract. There's a lot of efficiencies that we've not experimented with, but this is one contract that we entered into this spring that's working really well. And so we would anticipate maybe doing more of those with either the upcoming bond or possibly the sales tax. It would speed up the process much more. Just a unit price contracting as opposed to lump sum or contracting by project?
Now, you can't do that on new road construction or lightings or anything, but we're talking about milliner overlays.
The resurfacing.
Eric, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, public transportation. Jason Fairbush.
So good morning, Mayor and Council. Pleased to be here this morning to present the FY 2018 proposed budget for the Public Transportation and Parking Department. Would like to introduce a few staff that are with us this morning. We have Michael Scroggins, the manager of marketing, customer relations and technology. He's helping with the presentation. And then over on this side, three rows back, we have Jesse Rush, our streetcar operations manager, and four rows back, we have Melissa Rousey, our financial services manager. Each one of them were a huge help in preparing the budget that I'm going to share with you this morning. So I hope you enjoy the, the photo we have on the title slide this morning. This is, of course, the Ferris wheel that's on the south bank of the Oklahoma River, and we wanted to include it this morning because this photo was actually snapped from one of our embark river cruises as it provided public transit service along the Oklahoma River. So just a, I think, a great symbol of some of the wonderful things that are happening in our, happening in our city. One of the things we want to make sure we accomplish with the presentation this morning is to demonstrate the public transportation and parking department's commitment to being good stewards and leveraging our resources that are included within our budget to continue some of the positive things happening in Oklahoma City, particularly in the areas of public transportation. So in FY 18, we would expect a year similar to FY 17 in that we do not have plans for any expanded service in the FY 18 proposed budget, and we will take a similar approach to the one we had in FY 17. But that does not mean we will not continue to emphasize and make incremental improvements in our service delivery. So on this slide here, you can see a few things on the left, some of the different policies and initiatives that we have accomplished in FY 17 to make some of those incremental improvements. And again, our strategy moving into FY 18 is to approach improving our services in a similar manner. Some of the things that we were able to roll out in FY 17 in the areas of incremental improvements was certainly some new policies, whether it be our bus stop policy, which improved the safety of our system, or our tobacco and vape free policy, which makes all embark public transit facilities and vehicles tobacco-free. We also, as you know, received some recognition from our association. In this last year, we expanded our hall pass program, and recently we've been very busy in community engagement, conducting some focus groups and some listening sessions that we'll get into a little bit later in the presentation. So again, if you're following along in your budget book, our budget documents start on page C, C 145. Our performance information, which includes some of our performance measures, strategic results and strategies, begins on page G 118. And so with the presentation this morning, what we hope to do is we're going to share just a little bit of survey information. We're going to talk a little bit about some of the components of our strategic business plan, and that's really in the interest of kind of laying the foundation or the context for what we have in our proposed budget. So looking at our first slide on survey information, this is a slide that you're pretty familiar with. This is results of our most recent citizen survey, and you can continue that, or you can see that public transportation continues to be one of those city services that residents indicate need the most emphasis in the coming years. In fact, you can see in our latest survey, public transportation actually gained about three percentage points. And then looking at the next slide, this is some survey, we, survey work we do with our customers, and these are our latest survey results from our customer survey conducted in November. Looking at the, the left-hand side of the slide, you can see that we continue to have pretty good overall service ratings. About 69% of the respondents rated embark overall services as good or excellent. Looking over to the right-hand side of the slide, I thought you might find this information interesting. When respondents were asked how long they've been using transit service, you can see that we continue to garner new riders. In fact, if you look at the two categories to the left of that graph, you'll notice about 31% of the respondents have used the bus service for one year or less. So we're very encouraged by new people using the bus system. And then in the bottom right, this is a, a graph here that really shows, I think, some of the impact of the emphasis we've been placing recently on improving our bus stops. We know we have an extremely large amount of work still to do in improving our bus stops, but with the increased number of shelters, the sidewalks and the concrete pads for the bus benches that really have come in large parts with, due to partnerships with Public Works and the MAPS office, you can see we're starting to see some better results there from our customers when they're asked if their bus stop has a bench, shelter or sidewalks. As far as what we do, you can see that we are a multimodal transit service. We also play a major role in satisfying downtown parking needs, and our mission in part is to provide public transportation and downtown parking services to the residents and visitors of greater Oklahoma City area so they can experience friendly, convenient, safe and affordable public transportation and parking services. So as we move into the strategic business planning section of our presentation this morning, as you're aware, one of the things we do in our strategic business planning process is we try to identify, you know, those big challenges that our department is facing in the coming years. In this case, you can see we have four major challenges or issues identified, and we'll get into each one of those as we go through the presentation. But our goal is to identify those issues, develop strategies to address those issues. As a result of successfully addressing those issues, we feel like we're directly supporting the council priorities to develop a transportation system that works for all residents, maintain strong financial management and promote safe, secure and thriving neighborhoods. So the first issue that we're going to look at this morning is state of good repair. You can see at the top of the slide here, we've stated the trend or the issue, including the need to replace buses and modernize equipment. At the bottom of the slide, we've identified some of the consequences that could occur if this issue is not addressed. And again, that's not to say that, you know, all of these negative things will come to fruition. It's just an exercise of identifying really the significance of this challenge and why it's so important to address it. So each one of these issue slides that you'll see this morning are set up in this similar fashion. When we look at state of good repair, we definitely have to talk about the condition of our bus fleet. We've, we've done this over the last few years, keeping council advised of the status of our fleet. At one time, we were operating our bus service with 30% of our fleet being past its useful life. And the significance of that is when a fixed route bus gets past its useful life, that means it's 12 years old or older and has generally at least a half a million, oftentimes 600,000 miles on it. So the vehicles are certainly ready for replacement when they reach the end of their useful life. With that said, I am pleased to report that we have 11 new 40-foot CNG buses on order. When you take those 11 buses that are on order that we expect to be delivered this fall, add the seven buses that we have already replaced this fiscal year, we have successfully addressed that immediate need for bus replacement. With that said, we don't have to look too far into the future, however, to see another significant need coming. In 2021, we will have 15 buses that will reach the end of their useful life. That's about a $7.5 million need for bus replacement, and really to have those buses in service in 2021, we're looking at obligating those funds maybe as early as 2020. So we don't have too, too large of a window there to prepare for that funding need. Looking at our current federal funding, we will not reach that goal based on current federal funding levels, and that's why in our GO bond program list, we actually ranked and requested that bus replacement be our department's number one need in the proposed GO bond list that we'll move forward to, to the voters. So that is our solution for addressing that need in 2021. This next slide here will show you a rendering of the new vehicles that we're purchasing. Hopefully you've seen some of them providing service on the city streets. In addition to these new flyer Excelsior model buses being replacements for an aging fleet, they're also a little bit of an upgrade to what they're, they're, they are replacing. First of all, you'll notice they have a little bit more of a modern look. They actually operate much quieter because they're CNG. Whether you're riding the bus or you happen to be a pedestrian on the sidewalk as a bus passes you, you will notice they are, they're much quieter than the diesel buses they're replacing. All of these buses are also equipped with onboard mobile device chargers, which of course comes in very handy with the customers that we serve today in the fact that all of our buses are equipped with free Wi-Fi. Lastly, I'll mention that each one of these CNG buses displays our SmartMove brand, and this is really kind of a subset of our embark brand. It's really a platform that we're going to use to communicate the benefits of public transportation to our community. So whether a person takes a bus because it's a CNG, clean burning fuel bus that improves the environment, you know, that could be considered a smart move all the way to perhaps the personal financial savings someone might realize in taking public transit. That in itself is also a smart move. So we're looking at, really trying to leverage this, this messaging as we move forward into the next fiscal year. We also did some work on our ferry boats that provide transit service along the Oklahoma River. Although our ferry vessels have a 50-year life, there are times when we need to pull the boats out of the water and do some significant rehabilitation. And this was the year that we pulled the Devon Pioneer out of the water during the off-season. We sandblasted, repainted the hull, repainted actually the entire vessel. You can see in some pictures there where we did some work on the rudders, the props, the prop shafts. What I wanted to mention it, with regards to this slide, is that when we finished the rehabilitation process, we had a marine surveyor come out and basically grade the condition of the vessel, and the vessel scored very high. In fact, it received the highest score a vessel can receive without being brand new. So we're very pleased with the way the rehabilitation went. But more importantly, I think it speaks to really the attention to detail that our contractor, HMS Global, they're the ones that provide, help us provide the service and maintenance along the Oklahoma River. They've really done a good job maintaining our, our equipment. And then state of good repair, of course, also impacts our off-street parking operations with the various garages that we are charged with maintaining. One of the projects we have on the way, in fact, it's out for bid right now, and we've partnered with the utilities department, working with their project managers and their architect, is additional improvements to the Sheridan Walker parking garage. Some of the things we have planned for the garage will be replacing the lighting on the parking decks with LED lighting so that the lighting will be very similar to what you see in the Arch District Garage. We're putting canopies on each of the northeast and southeast corners where the elevator towers are. We plan to open up the southeast corner of the facility to make it more accessible for pedestrians. You can see a rendering of that in the bottom right-hand portion of the slide. And then we're also going to do some significant work on the elevator lobbies, the stairwells, and actually even renovate the interior of the elevator cabs. So as you can imagine, looking at the, the rendering there in the top right of the slide, those elevator lobbies will be repainted, there'll be new floors and so forth.
Jason, thank you and your team for working on that. I know it's been a long time coming, but I really appreciate it. It will up the standard of a city garage on a really important corner.
Yep, looking forward to it. So our next issue here is workforce development, and this is a challenge that I know many organizations face, and we have identified that as one of our challenges, and it's basically the idea of retaining, you know, employees. It continues to be a challenge. Last year, when we discussed the budget, I was able to report that we had some successes in recruiting and promoting minorities and women. I think I touched on the amount of training that we did on an annual basis for new hires, which is about 1,400 hours annually. And so I wanted to kind of continue that discussion and make sure council was aware that we are continuing to emphasize our internal service, our internal service delivery. So what do I mean by that? There's a couple of projects we have in the works that are helping us with our workforce development. One is developing a employee recognition program. That program is actually being put together by a committee of managers and frontline employees. We're also reinventing our onboarding process, so looking at new ways to basically bring new employees into the organization and make sure they're trained and they understand how the organization works. And then one of the activities that I think is going to serve us very well in the years to come, and you can see on the bottom of the slide here, a couple of images where the executive management team met to develop core values for our organization. So we had several retreats, we developed our core values, we finished that process with a full day of training, and we're now in the process of launching those core values and training to our mid-level managers and then eventually to our frontline staff. So again, I think that was an exercise that'll serve us well into the future. So our next issue, excuse me, our next issue looks at sustainable growth and service development. As we've added service over the last few years and we continue to look at alternative transportation modes, one of the things that definitely becomes a challenge is being able to sustain that growth without dedicated funding. So one of the ways for us to look and evaluate, are we sustaining the growth, is to look at our ridership on our transit system. So our fixed route ridership for FY 2016, and that's our first, I'm sorry, that's our most recent full fiscal year of data, you can see we provided over 3.2 million passenger trips with our fixed route bus service, and over 90% of those trips was our regular Monday through Friday weekday service. Looking at our ridership, a little bit more of a historical perspective to give you a sense of how it's changed over the last few years, we have a graph here that will show you the average daily ridership. So you can see in FY 17, we are on pace to finish the year providing about 11,300 trips per day on our weekday fixed route service. Now that's really flat, but it's coming off of about two years of significant growth from FY 14, which I would ask you to consider FY 14 basically as our baseline because that was the year prior to us implementing our service enhancements. You can see rather remarkable growth in FY 15 and 16, and now our fixed route service has basically kind of leveled out since last year. Now with that said, we do continue to see some, some good growth on our night service. So this graph here will give you a sense of the total number of trips provided using embark night service since the service began in January 15th, I'm sorry, in January of 2015. So you can, as you remember, in January 2015, we launched the service with two routes. You can see the ridership grew. We added two additional routes in January of 2016. You can see continued growth. And then that gray bar on the graph, that represents kind of the beginning of the first full fiscal year of all four of the night routes providing service. And you can see in March of 17, we actually had our highest number of riders on our evening service since we've launched night service. So this is really where we're seeing, still seeing some pretty good growth in our ridership.
Jason, can I, this is, so this is, how many lines are there total? How many routes?
So we, we have four routes.
No, total, all, all routes?
Oh, I'm sorry, we have 21 routes in total, and we have four.
So we're up to four out of 21, and this is hourly service up until what time?
Till midnight.
Till midnight, okay, thanks.
And then the next slide is a look at some ridership on some of our alternative transportation modes. Top left, this is the ridership for our Oklahoma River cruise operation, and I wanted to point out that in 2016, we actually had our best year yet in terms of ridership on the Oklahoma River. We provided over 16,000 trips to and from the various landings along the Oklahoma River. The blue line graph that you see in that same chart, that represents the number of charters. We also do offer private charters on the Oklahoma River cruises, and our charters were up in 2016 as well. Moving down to the bottom left of the slide, this will give you a sense of the type of ridership we see on our Spokee system, about 8,300 trips on an annual basis, and we're hoping to continue to grow that as people get used to our new bike share equipment. And then over on the right-hand side of the slide, this is an update on our rideshare program that I talked a little bit about in the winter as we were just launching the program. We began the rideshare program with one group of employees participating out at Boeing. We've now grown that to two different groups of employees at Boeing that are participating in rideshare, and we continue to make contacts with businesses around the community. So we have 12 participants in total in the rideshare program, and so what that means is through this rideshare program, we have basically removed 10 single occupancy vehicles from the morning and afternoon commute times by implementing this program. Then the next slide here will give you just a sense of what we're preparing for in terms of standing up streetcar operations. I understand that council gets regular updates from the MAPS office regarding the status of the project. Here's a few things that we're doing to prepare for operations. We plan to award a contract to Herzog Transit Services in June of 2017, so next month. We've been busy in negotiations over the past several months. We do expect to begin receiving streetcars and having the maintenance facility completed this fall, which means we'll be needing to equip that facility and get some personnel in there. Our contractor in November will be helping us review some of the safety plans we've already drafted. They'll be developing standard operating procedures. And then in August of 2018, we expect to begin testing the line with anticipation of revenue service in December of 2018. So we're still looking at bringing the contractor onboard about 18 months ahead of planned service, which we believe is, will give us adequate, certainly adequate time to stand up operations.
One thing you mentioned is opening up better lines of communication with the tenants, vendors in the path of the streetcar. Can you explain that a little, what you're trying to do to, as far as better communication is concerned?
Yeah, the, well, the, the communication is, is really led by the MAPS office, but now we do work closely with the MAPS office. I know that they have a dedicated person that routine- that routinely visits with all, not only business owners, but property owners along the streetcar route. You can, many folks have signed up for the weekly construction updates. I'm sure most of you receive those. And so, I think at this point, the communication is, is going really well. In fact, I believe the Maps Office received some comments about, from the contractor that's done this work in some other communities, actually about how smooth the, the communication is actually going with the project. Okay, and then, our last issue this morning is that one related to community relations. And just like any city department, you know, we, we continue to strive to meet our community's expectations, whether it be, you know, additional night service, weekend service, maybe it's new technology. And so, I wanted to share a couple of projects that we have in process as we attempt to meet those community expectation needs. One of them is a partnership with the University of Central Oklahoma. They currently have a small amount of space that they lease from us on the first floor of the Santa Fe Parking Garage. They have, and we actually have some vacant tenant space at the Santa Fe Garage. They have indicated they would like to take all of our remaining tenant space, which is in excess of 15,000 square feet, and really use that space to grow their small business incubator and some of the other services that they provide. So, this project is currently in design phase. We expect to begin to work on it in the coming fiscal year. And the slide here just shows some renderings, some early renderings of what the architect put together for UCO in terms of what that improved tenant space might look like. But I think it's a great project for activating that Santa Fe Plaza and really giving a purpose for some people to, to visit that facility. On our next slide here, again, in the, looking at community expectations, one of the basic community expectations for public transit, of course, is comfortable bus stops with lots of information about how to use the system, right? So, we continue to increase the amount of information that we have at our bus stops. As you'll recall, the signs that we now have include route information signs that indicate which route serve that stop. We also have unique stop IDs, so that customers can use their, their mobile phone to receive text alerts of when the next bus will arrive. And so, our next phase of adding information to that signage suite is, is installing these customer information panels. So, what do the customer information panels bring to the, to the transit stops? First of all, just kind of looking at the sign here, starting at the top, you can see the unique stop ID. Moving down towards the middle of the sign there, there's some instructions on how to use the real-time text alerts. And then, one of the new features we've added is the QR code. So, a customer could actually simply scan that QR code and, and receive a notice of when the next two buses will arrive at that stop. Moving down further towards the middle of the sign, you can see the, the bus route that actually serves that stop, along with the frequency on the weekday and on the weekend. And then, as you move down towards the bottom, we have some tips for our customers on how to ride the bus, one being be sure to have your fare ready, which can significantly impact the on-time performance of buses if the fare is not ready. And then, also to make sure you signal the driver if you're wanting to board the bus. So, we're looking forward to getting those signs out on each one of our bus stops, whether that's a shelter, a bench, or simply a, a sign. And then, community engagement. Wrapping up our community relations discussion, we always try to take advantage of different public outreach opportunities. And here's some images of three recent outreach activities. In the top left, this is a listening session we held at the Cotter Tower for transit users and downtown parkers. And this study was led by our staff and our fare study consultant. And again, we wanted to hear from the public on what they would like to see in terms of a fare system for embark. So, specifically, a fare that would work between multiple modes, and then also have some discussions on whether we can design a fare that would work between transit and parking. In the top right of the screen, you can see our participation at one of the GeoBond community workshops. And then, the photo at the bottom of the screen is a focus group we held actually just last week, where we brought in non-riders to learn more about why they don't use transit, or what are some things we could do that would, you know, basically make them more comfortable using transit. So, the survey information is very helpful in giving us the raw numbers. The focus groups really help us understand our community and what we can do to, to improve transit and get more riders. So, moving on to the budget, that kind of concludes the strategic business planning portion of the presentation. We'll begin by taking a look at the FY 18 budget. One more slide, there you go. So, one thing I want to mention is if you're following along in the city budget book, you're going to see the city budget of about $19.6 million and about 32 positions. So, what I have on the slide, however, is the entire budget for the Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority, which, as you know, receives a considerable amount, actually about 57% of the funding for bus operations from the city's general fund. So, I just wanted to, to point that out and make sure you're aware of the budget that you have before you is actually the entire budget that's required to provide the transit and parking services that I've described. So, total budget is about $36.8 million. You can see 26.4 of that is for bus service, or about 72% of the budget. 8.4 of that is allocated to off-street parking, or about 23% of the budget. $900,000 for ferry service, $840,000 for streetcar. This is phase one of the streetcar startup, and then about 200 for bike-share. Now, as we're looking at the parking budget piece of the pie there, it's important to note that our parking system is completely self-sufficient. So, the operations, the debt service, the capital maintenance, all of that is funded by fees generated from those that use the system. So, there's no general fund support at all for off-street parking. So, looking at parking and the funding sources, you can see that we have of the $8.4 million in estimated revenue, 1.1 of that would come from daily transient parking, 5.1 of that would come from monthly parkers, that's certainly the largest share of our revenue, 1.8 million for event, and then other of about $244,000. And then, looking at our transit funding sources, again, as I mentioned, the major revenue source is the City of Oklahoma City's general fund at just over $16 million. Now, this is for bus service, bike-share, river, and streetcar. But again, with the enhancements that we've made to the bus system over the last few years, all of that has been really based on additional general fund, general fund support provided by the city council. Our federal revenue is about $7 million, or 25% of our budget. Fares are at about 3.3, or 12% of our budget. So, our fare box recovery is estimated to be about 12% next year. State, just under a million, and then other revenue sources of just under a million dollars. As far as major budget changes go, I did want to mention that the Public Transportation and Parking Department, like other city departments, were required to make a 4% budget cut. So, we had to look at reducing our general fund subsidy by that amount. And I'm pleased to report that we were able to make our budget reduction without having to negatively impact any services. So, we're not eliminating any service in the proposed budget that's before you. So, how did we make that cut without eliminating service? Well, here's a few of the major changes. First of all, we're able to reduce our budget for bus parts by about $125,000. So, that's another advantage of having newer buses and buses that are within their lifecycle. We also consolidated our transit planning division, eliminating two positions for a savings of about $185,000. Now, with that in mind, we reached out to the planning department, and although we reduced two positions from our planning staff, we are partnering with the planning department to partially fund a planner in planning. We do a lot of work with the planning department. They've been great partners to us, and it seemed like it was just a really good move, a win-win basically, for, for both departments to come to that arrangement. We also reduced two other positions, a customer service representative and an office assistant for a savings of $100,000. And then, we're able to reduce our RTA membership fee per the agreed-upon schedule by the participating cities. So, in addition to the budget reductions, when you go to balance the budget, obviously, it's not just about cutting expenses. We also try to look for ways to enhance revenue with our customer base. We try to be very, very sensitive to increased revenues, because that usually means increased fares. We do have two revenue enhancements that we have proposed. One is implementing a fare on the Downtown Discovery. As you know, the Downtown Discovery is currently free. We would like to recommend, or we are recommending implementing a 50-cent fare for Downtown Discovery service. The other revenue enhancement we have is increasing the Zone 2 ADA paratransit fare to $10.50. So, it'd be going from $7 to $10.50. So, what I'd like to do is just real quickly explain the difference between Zone 1 and Zone 2. We are required by the FTA to provide paratransit service within 3/4 of a mile of a fixed route bus route. That is Zone 1. That is our required mandated area. We have to do that if we're going to provide fixed route service. As a city, we have chosen to actually provide that paratransit service to the full 620 square miles. So, there's lots of, I mean, there's paratransit service provided in areas where there's not a bus route near the location. So, obviously, that is again, some of our most expensive trips. So, what we're recommending is for the Zone 2, in order to help preserve that service, increasing the fare from $7 to $10.50. As far as program increases go, the budget was increased by $840,000 for the Oklahoma City Streetcar Startup. Again, that is phase 1. That's the first, that is for the first 12 months, I'm sorry, that is for the next 12 months, and $840,000 is for the entire FY 18 fiscal year. And then, the last program increase is $160,000 addition to really continue to modernize our on-street parking system. And we're converting, or recommending converting, to a pay-by-plate system. So, what does that mean? Again, this is in the interest really of just keeping up with some of the technology that is out there. So, there's really two benefits we see to this pay-by-plate technology. One is that it's more convenient for parking customers. So, as the system works now with the electronic meters, you park your car, you get out, you find a meter, you pay, you wait for the sticker to print, you go back to your car, put it on the windshield, lock your car up, and then go on about your business. With the pay-by-plate technology, basically, a customer can park anywhere that there's designated on-street parking, find any meter, perhaps, you know, walking on the way to their appointment, pay using their license plate information, and continue on. So, it really takes that whole process of paying, coming back, and then going to your appointment out of the equation. So, we think it's a big convenience factor. The other thing we think the pay-by-plate technology is going to do for us is it's going to really allow us to modernize our existing coin-operated meters. And so, how do we do that? Well, because the pay-by-plate allows people basically to pay from any meter, and they don't have to find one close to them and go back, we can take our existing inventory of on-street parking meters and more evenly distribute them throughout the downtown area. So, whereas we have multiple electronic meters now per block face, we may have one per block face, or two in the instance of a super block, but we'll basically be able to spread those out and replace most, in fact, if not all, of the meat, the coin-operated meters that are in the downtown area. So, as we implement this program, we'll be seeing the electronic meters in Bricktown and other areas.
Jason, does that mean we will remove those old coin meters and just get rid of them?
Yes, yep. The electronic meters will replace the existing coin ops, and the coin ops will go away.
Great.
The coin ops have turned into significant maintenance problems. We can't get replacement parts for them anymore.
What's the timeline?
On the, on the parking meter replacement, we are targeting the first quarter of the next fiscal year. Now, we don't know exactly how long it will take us to reposition all the meters, but in terms of, you know, equipping our existing electronic meters with the new hardware and getting the software updated, all of that we hope to accomplish within the first quarter of the coming fiscal year.
I'd say late fall.
Yes, late fall. I should say by the end of the quarter, yeah, not July. Thank you. Jim?
Is it our, is it our plan to run the streetcar on Sundays?
Right now, the plan is to run streetcar on Sundays for major events only. So, a Thunder game, the Arts Festival, what we are negotiating has adequate revenue hours in the proposal to provide service just for special events.
What would it cost to run Sunday bus service?
You know, it, it, it really depends on what type of Sunday service you want. I mean, we've, you know, we've, we've looked at some very limited Sunday service. Been at least a year since we took a look at it, but, you know, again, you're, you're looking at about a million to million-one, but again, that's a very limited servant, service, even less service than what we have on a Saturday now. But, but service that we believe, you know, could be a viable start, just like we did with the night service, starting just with two routes.
Is there, is there any city in America larger than us that doesn't have Sunday bus service?
Not that I'm aware of.
Is there any city larger than us that has less than 20% of its routes having evening service?
Not that I'm aware of.
So, we are the largest city in America without public bus service on Sundays, less than 20% of our routes running in the evenings, and when they do run, they run once an hour, which we know is not an adequate frequency to attract significant amounts of riders.
Yeah, I would, I'm not aware of, yeah, any other city our size or larger that, that has the level of night service or not having Sunday service.
And, and this is in a city where 23% as of 2015 in the greater metropolitan area are living at the poverty level or below, 23%. So, basically, one out of four Oklahoma citizens. The average cost to own, maintain, and operate an automobile is $10,000 a year. The poverty level's $12,000 a year, $16,000 a year for a couple, $20,000 a year for a couple and a child. Just doesn't seem like those one out of four people living at the poverty level or below could afford to operate a vehicle. And so, when you're the largest city in America without public bus service on Sundays, and almost none in the evenings, you're cutting your budget by $600,000. And we're considering a sales tax initiative. I think I'm just, I'm just asking for consideration to be given, instead of spending all 3/4 of a penny on streets, which we may or may not be able to actually do that, that some consideration be given to other departments like transit, like parks, who are obviously running below the national standard, if you will. And I, and I understand we're, we're, we have an anemic state budget. What's, what's given to us by the state legislature is ridiculous. But I, I would hope that some consideration by this body would be given to that. I, I would like to work with you over the next couple of years on electric vehicles. Electric vehicles are being used throughout Europe. If European cities can do it, we can do it. I, I appreciate this investment in, in CNG. I do think clean natural gas is still a bit of an oxymoron. I think that it's not a long-term solution. It's a, it's a placeholder. It's a transition step. To make large-scale investments in CNG, it's just not energy efficient with the amount of energy it takes to pressurize the natural gas to keep it in that liquid state. So, I think the transition to electric vehicles is coming. I hope, I, I want to work with you. I want, whatever I can do to help. I think as we talk about this large investment in 2020 or 2021, that, that we really work over the next couple of years on, on looking at the electric vehicle component.
Yes, we would, we would certainly look forward to that. And as you might recall, the last low or no emissions And as you might recall, the last low or no emission grant that the FTA announced, we did actually put in application for a couple of electric buses. So it is something that we're, we're interested in pursuing and would look forward to working with you on that.
Thank you.
Jason, any preliminary ideas as to what federal funding may be like in the future, in the near future? Have you heard anything as far as increases, decreases in public transportation funding?
Well, you know, right now, we're, we're still working within the rules of the FAST Act legislation, which was signed into law, I believe it was December of 2015. And so that was a big win for transit in that it was a five-year, long-term solution, which we hadn't had for quite a while. For us locally, we didn't see a lot of benefit in that, I shouldn't say, well, our formula amounts did not change drastically. So our typical, you know, allocation stayed, you know, pretty much consistent. What the program really did do for bus and bus facilities is it added about $268 million annually in a competitive grant program. So the FTA, the legislation, legislators, they recognized that need for bus and bus replacement, and rather than allocating it out in formula-based funding, it was more of a competitive program. Now, with that said, we were successful in the first round of those competitive grant programs. We were successful, and it was a, it was a highly competitive, if not one of the most competitive, grant programs the FTA has administered. And that's one of the reasons why we're able to order 11 new buses. So we've benefited from that competitive nature of the funding, but we're not going to see anything really moving ahead that's going to affect our, just our normal formula amount. Now, with that said, we know that there's discussions about, you know, infrastructure, you know, infrastructure legislation, a big infrastructure package, you know, our, we're just kind of waiting and seeing really at this point. But it, but as of now, we're still operating under the FAST, FAST Act, which is good for us.
Yeah. There's discussion about an infrastructure package, but there isn't any funding identified for it at this point in time, so.
Just a couple more questions. The, you know, as we, as you discussed, you know, changing the way we pay for on-street parking, any thoughts as to alternative ways to pay for fares on bus other than, you know, having a pass or using cash, especially in light of trying to attract riders who don't necessarily have to use public transportation, which would include either credit cards or smartphones, things like that?
Yes, absolutely. In fact, the listening session that I mentioned where our fare study consultants were in town, our consultant, 49's Technologies, they are helping us with that. We want to adapt our fare collection methods. We want to make them more modern. So whether it be being able to pay from a mobile device or a reloadable card, we're really in the process of kind of evaluating all of those options right now. And ideally, and it'd be something, you know, fairly new to the industry, would be to combine our, our parking operations with our transit, again, thinking of a person or a family coming downtown to park in one of the COTP garages, being able to easily access transit and not have to make an additional transaction.
Yeah, great. Okay, you know, the focus right now is on streetcars, but you're still looking at bus rapid transit. And, you know, some of the studies we've, we've brought to the city indicate that that's a great vehicle, not on the same scale as a streetcar, but we still see signs of commercial development following that bus rapid transit route. And, and I think the Classen to Northwest Highway is probably the first one we'll, we'll look at, and, and that's something I think we should all be, you know, excited about at one point in time.
And that, that corridor that you mentioned, the Classen to Northwest Expressway, that was recommended as a BRT route in the 2005 Fixed Guideway Study, which is also the study we're using as a recommendation for the streetcar downtown circulator. So it's just kind of consistently, even though that plan's a little dated, we're consistently working that plan. And so as a, as a quick update, we, we are actually in the process of conducting a benefits cost analysis for that BRT route, so still evaluating.
And one last thing, Embark is going to participate. Is it May the 19th is Ride Your Bike to Work Day?
That is correct.
And can you tell us what Embark has plans?
Well, sure. I mean, we certainly will do our normal social media blast to tout the benefits of riding your bike and using the bus, reminding our community that all of our buses are equipped with bike racks. And so looking to, you know, basically just get the word out and, and let people try the bus and bike routine for a day.
Jason, I had two quick things.
Yes.
With a multimodal bus or transit pass, it might be able to be used on a bus or on the streetcar. Can you also use it on the boats, Devin Cruisers?
We have not took that off the table. In fact, we're, we have asked our consultants to make a recommendation on simply a, a transit pass that works on all modes, maybe, maybe even bike share, but it's just trying to get all those different systems to communicate with each other. But yeah, certainly, we're trying to do that.
I mean, we're kind of in it, we're an outlier on bus service, but we're probably one of the only cities that also has boats available for public transit. You know, we ought to be talking about that some and encouraging people to really use it more than they do, so maybe that's an idea. And the second thing is, could you talk a little bit about the outreach you're doing with communication in the Hispanic community?
Oh, sure. We are in the process of conducting a, a survey and some focus groups, again, specifically for the Hispanic community. We know from some of our own standard customer surveys that's, that that's a market that is really underserved. We underserve that population with our bus service, and there's really no reason we shouldn't. So we want to figure out, okay, what's the best way to communicate with that, that section, that portion of the market and make sure they know about the benefits of our, of our system? So that'll be something I'll be looking forward to, reporting back maybe during our mid-year update on how that goes. All right, thank you.
Next up, next up is Development Services and Bob Keener.
I'd like, I'm going to walk you through the Development Services Department's budget. I'd like to introduce a couple of people first. Rick Wick, Rick Wickencamp was, is the Assistant Director. He was responsible for most of this presentation. Carol Reed is the Management Specialist. She put the budget together. Cindy Lake in here is going to help me through the presentation, hope I don't mess it up. Your budget starts on page C33. The mission of the Development Services Department is to provide animal welfare, code enforcement, construction permitting and inspections, licensing, and development application review services to the development community and general public so they can receive timely development decisions and live in a clean, safe, and stable city. Organizationally, there's 182 employees in five lines of business, admin, animal welfare, code enforcement subdivision, and the development center. Our budget summary, the post-operating budget is $17,398,920. This is about 3.1% below last year's operating budget. Our major budget changes, we primarily met our reduction through the elimination of nine positions. We had five in code enforcement, three of those are code inspector ones, two in animal welfare, one in subdivision zoning, and one in development center. With the development center, I need to mention that we've been in discussions with the development community about implementing a insulation inspection on residential homes. And we're proposing to add two building inspector ones and a, fund a system analyst two in IT, and we're going to implement insulation inspections. The community, development community agreed to a three cent per square foot increase in the building on the residential permitting fees, and you'll see that ordinance in the future. We'll have to run it through council first. I'm going to talk about code enforcement. They complete over 100,000 inspections a year. Primarily, they do dilapidate unsecured properties, junk and debris, high grass and weeds, illegal signs. Property maintenance is another, another big part of this. And with the spring, we've had a lot of rain, so we're, we're anticipating the grass and weed complaints will really go up, and they're primarily our, our number one reactive complaint. This shows, in, in July of 2014, we started counting our proactive inspections versus our reactive inspections. Reactive inspection are ones that are complaints that we receive through the action center or the manager's office. And right now, we're averaging over 50% of our inspections are proactive. And proactive means we have inspectors in the neighborhoods, talking to property owners when we've identified problems. And this, this graph reflects the high grass and weed complaints in the spring, summer, and early fall. We have to respond to those high grass and weed complaints, so our proactive dips when we do that. One thing I'll add here is that we are currently negotiating with another contractor to add a, a contractor to bait weed and grass. We currently have two, we're going to add a third. Hopefully, that'll make us more, more responsive and get, get those weeds cut timelier. So this is the first time we've really been able to do three contractors. This is the graph that shows our code violations resolved voluntarily. Right now, it's at 54%. The more complaints that we can get a property owner to resolve cuts down on the paperwork for the inspector and eliminates any need for citations. So this, this number has continued to go up, and our inspectors always, anytime we find a violation, you get 30 days to comply, and our inspectors will work with you if, you know, you're showing progress. So we're, hopefully, this trend will continue. Now, I'm going to walk you through just a couple of pictures of some of the things that our inspectors see in the field. This one is one that had some siding issues. We gave them notice, and they've completely resided the, the building and worked on the eaves and painted. This next one, this is one had a similar problem, and they completely re-bricked the property. So both of these are indications of, you know, I'm sure the neighbors think that's a good idea when somebody will come in and spend, make that kind of investment to the dilapidated property. This third one's a little unique. This is one that was kind of on the road to dilapidated or unsecured, had multiple property maintenance violations. So we worked with them, and in April of last year, the property sold. And then in December of this year, it, it was resold for $195,000. So this is a, I can't take credit for any of that, but we did kind of push them towards resolving this. And I'm sure the, you know, the neighbors probably think this is great, so.
Take credit for it.
Yeah. Now, I'm going to talk about development center. This is our largest division. They do over 122,000 inspections a year. They're primarily responsible for construction inspections, permitting, and plan review. They do 53,000 permits a year, which averages about 200 permits, a little over 200 permits a day. They, and this last, last bullet there, that's insulation inspections I talked about earlier, that we're going to add 3,600 new inspections to this group. Adding those two building inspectors, we'll, we'll spread the insulation inspections out among all our inspectors, but it's part of the energy code, and a lot of the home builders are, are excited about being able to get, get this inspection now. This is our percent of construction-related inspections completed within a day. Staff, our, our field guys and our managers have worked really hard on this. It wasn't too long ago that we were out five, six days before you get an inspection. Last year, we peaked at 97%, which is almost same-day inspection for your, if you're a contractor. We're right at 91%, or projecting 91%, which is still 1% over what we targeted. We'll add here that over the last year, our construction inspection superintendent, our chief mechanical, and our chief building inspector's all retired. So we had to bring staff in and, and make some changes to cover the work. So I anticipate, those positions are all filled now, and I anticipate we'll get back in the mid-'90s the next time you see this report. But this is a report that I send to the manager's office every week, and it's been, it's been pretty strong, really. Every year, we do a customer service survey of our plan review process. So we send out almost 500 surveys to our top 50 contractors in each of the trade groups. We also post it online, and we just ask them how we're doing with the plan review process. This year, or really, this is, it goes out in June, so we're preparing to do next year's, next month, but last year, we were at 74%. Our target's 75%. And as you saw in, in that earlier graphic, there's a lot of people coming and going and a lot of moving parts, and so we're pretty happy with that 74%. And hopefully, we'll continue to increase. Now, I'm going to talk about animal welfare. They have over 7,500 visitors a day. They're open seven days a week. We complete over 20,000 customer service calls. We do, there are several things that they do out there, the, the staff is really dedicated. You know, the, to work out there, I think you'd have to be dedicated to animals. But we do over 9,000 spade and neuters a, a year. 4,000 of those are part of our community spade and neuter program, which any citizen in Oklahoma City can get their pets spayed or neutered free. They just have to call and make an appointment. And, you know, that's one of the things that, that we feel like is going to help our, like keep, continue to help our live release rate and also reduce the number of animals in the community. But we have a lot, we, we can't do this alone. We have a lot of active partners, the ASPCA, the Central OK Humane Society, the Bella Foundation, Wild Care. Those are all important groups that we work with. And we also, we have over 100 foster parents that take animals by, you know, that maybe aren't quite ready to be adopted. And we also have over 300 volunteers a year that come out there. That bottom picture, that's an Army Reserve unit that came out and spent a day there. And we can always find something for them to do, you know, walking dogs or doing the laundry or, so. I also want to mention, a year and a half ago, Shawnee Milling Company gave us a donation of two years of pet food. One thing about animal health, if they can have a consistent diet, the same food every day, it helps, it helps their health. And so we're, we're really, we're really lucky to get that opportunity to, to feed them that, that same type of food. We also have the Patrons of the Shelter, their, their nonprofit group that raise money for us, so we can buy, we, we bought some, I think we bought a microscope for the lab, and we buy different things for the money that they generate. So, you know, and plus the council support and the manager's office support, you know, that's the only way we can really be efficient out at the shelter. This is our wagon wagon. Kristi Jaeger named that for us, so I'm not sure what I would have called it, but basically, this is a mobile adoption unit. The council approved a grant a couple of years ago from the Stanton Foundation for $150,000, and we were able to design it. It holds up to 28 animals, and we can take it on the road. We can basically take our show on the road to people. We can go to schools, events, and if you haven't seen it, you can walk through and see, view the animals. It's air-conditioned. It's built, it's really been a great asset for the, for the shelter. Then I want to show the live release rate. Right now, we're sitting, we're projecting at 71%. Our target right now is 70%. Ultimately, we'd like to get to 75, but staff tells me that they'll probably make 73% before the end of the year. But right now, we're looking at 71%. But that's really a good number. You know, when, I think it was 2009, we were at 25%. You know, when, I think it was 2009, we were at 25%. So. This next slide, this is the number of animal, live animals sheltered. If you look at FY '15, we had over 27,000 animals that go, went through the shelter that year, and that many animals stresses the facility, the, the employees, and the animals. So we tried to look at some ways to, to reduce that number, and we think part of it is our community spade and neuter program. And then we, we created a community program where we, we go out and try to educate animal owners about the right way to care for their animals, to shelter their animals, and so after, in two years, we've, we've reduced that number. We're going to be, come in just under 22,000, so we've reduced the number of animals that come through the shelter by 5,000 in two years. And this next slide shows some of those programs that we've committed to that, you know, help the, help somebody understand how important it is to take care of their animal. We've got a pet food bank. That one slide on the top looks like an elementary group, and then another guy, that's actually Enos Cantor, he came out and volunteered at the shelter for a day, and he's a little taller than those guys, but. And this one, I want to point out, in, on April 30th, The Oklahoman carried a article about one of our employees, Gail Lechner. She, she goes to the shelter twice a week for the last, has been going for the last 19 years, and she walks dogs, and one thing that you might notice, she takes the pictures that go out on the, on the, our website. So, I mean, they're professional-looking pictures, put the, put the animals in their best light, and we get a lot of adoptions, people just looking through our, our website. And then if you're missing a dog, you, you know, you can go there and find it. I mean, she's, that's just an example of how good our volunteers are and how much it helps us. And this, this are-
Bob, before, before we get off animal welfare, I just want to say, you know, you referenced in 2009, we were only at 25% live release, and, you know, I've been on the council since '08, late '08, and the improvement that's been made in animal welfare is so heartwarming to see. I just, it's, we've come so, so far, and your leadership has been fabulous, your team's been, been great, the community volunteers have all been good, but it's just been a really great, steady progression in positive results, so thank you so much for your attention.
I appreciate that. The staff out there, like I said, really, they really work hard at that, and they're, they take a lot of pride in that number going up. We're going to help them as much as we can. This is, the subdivision zoning, this is our smallest division. They process over 500 applications a year. They prim, they also provide direct support to the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment, and you guys see their staff reports and memos you see every Tuesday from this department. It's a really dedicated group, they have a lot of experience, and we try to measure their, their work. What we've decided is if we can, when an application is submitted, if we can work with a developer or applicant upfront and get all the information that's needed for the Planning Commission or the council to make a, a good decision, that helps them get their applications through faster. So this is the rezoning applications within 120 days, the other one's preliminary plats. You know, 100% is probably too much because there are some things that we can't control, but, you know, there's no reason that we can't keep those numbers in the 90%. And, you know, the, the better an application, the better shape an application is when it comes to you guys, the quicker it is for you guys to make appropriate decisions. My last slide, I just want to talk briefly about some things that we want to talk, we want to do. Currently, in the Development Center, if you want to purchase a building permit, you have two options, or really, three, but I don't want to, the other one's a fax machine, but that one really doesn't count. You either have to come in, or you have to call, and so our sell a building permit process has the ability to do online permitting, and so with the support from IT, we're going to try to implement as many permits to be purchased online. And for every, every online permit that's purchased, that takes away a walk-in or a phone call, and so it should just help us, you know, with every, all assets, all facets of that, that application process. And like I said, we do 205 permits, or over 200 a day, so any help we can get, taking the stress off the cust, you know, the staff that's there, the better their response will be. The second one, we want to automate code enforcement services. Currently, code enforcement is pretty much all done on paper. You know, the notice on each property, it comes back to the office, and the office staff shuffles it around, and then we take pictures and we print them. We're looking to put computers in the cars and allow the inspectors to do it paperless, you know, to be able to enter, they'll also be able to receive their inspections each day, should improve efficiency a little bit maybe, and so we're looking at trying to make it, the whole process more efficient. So IT's working with that, working with us on that process. We're just kind of in the early stages of doing that. And then the last one, improve our ability to manage animal control responses. We have a, a system out there that allows us to track our, track our calls and, and keep track of our animals. We're working with IT to try to improve that process. So those are really three things we're looking at to try to make us more efficient, you know, more efficient in responses to, to calls and, so. And I know that was quick, but does anybody have any questions?
Just one comment from contractors, developers, builders. I'm hearing a lot of good things about response time and inspector response time, and I want to thank you for implementing those procedures, but more importantly, I want to thank the inspectors for their hard work and tell them we are very appreciative and we support their hard work.
I'll do that, I appreciate that.
Any other questions for Bob?
Not so bad, being the last one, is it?
Yeah. Opportunity for public comment? Do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Michael Washington.
No sign up out there? Well, you can come on.
Ladies and gentlemen of the jury, I'll call you the jury, Michael Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73111. I walked in late on the subject matter, however, first part strikes me as interesting. Public Works Department, interesting. Can anybody define just briefly what that means, public works? Is that like cleaning up streets and, and potholes and stuff like that? Okay, well, we need a lot of work done on the northeast side of Oklahoma City, I'm sure our city councilman knows about this, but I'm trying to stick, well, let me take that back, he is kind of halfway doing something on 36th Street, this recent catastrophe that we had on 36th and Kelly, it's a deep storm, so he did do something on that one. Now, public transportation, I don't not agree a whole lot with what the gentleman spoke about earlier, because this streetcar, I believe, is useless, wastes of taxpayers' dollars, and designed to keep the money in the wealthy people downtown Oklahoma City. Every time you turn around, there's always some wealthy developer who wants to have his foot into the stronghold of what Oklahoma City downtown urban development is all about. That money could be re-challenged, redirected toward a more lenient, more categorized involvement with community development programs. Let's take, for example, education, not necessarily funding education, but if we had that money geared toward bringing in educating students from these classrooms and letting them see what this government is all about, and putting it into other social programs to keep them off drugs, in, off gangs, out of violence, truancy, impoverished communities, that kind of money, if we had more of a collective effort, would be more great for everybody. But every time you spin a streetcar, now what is that going to do? I mean, as the gentleman said on Sundays, he's going to have it running for special occasions for events like the Thunder Games or maybe the Dodgers Games or whatever the case may be. I mean, come on now, come on, are we seriously into this, are we really believing that? I mean, not saying he's not, now, I'm not questioning his judgment, but I'm saying it's unnecessary. Okay, and then we talk about this, the normal streetcars, excuse me, public transportation that is not even run for people who don't have funds, who are indigent, and who can't get the transportation they need. Like on Sundays, if somebody may need to go to church, we don't have it running. Why would we have something running for this that he's talking about, the streetcar? Why? Because it develops money for those people coming downtown mostly, which you know, poor folks don't come down, other than the fact that those are already poor on the street, homeless, they live down here. Okay, but somebody like myself may not have a car, and this, might not, matter of fact, is it going to cost to ride the trolley down there, the streetcar? Anybody mention that? Is that going to cost to ride the streetcar? You see what I'm getting at? That's what I'm trying to figure out. Nothing was mentioned other than, unless I walk in late, that's why I asked the question. Now, this gentleman spoke about Development Service Department, running here briefly. I am very interested in this dog program that he's talking about. It is very important, like I said, dogs, and you know, if dogs had the kind of shelter and loving, tender care and adoption, that I see a lot of stuff going on here, it would make the community much more better and more sound, because dogs, for the most part, can be actually man's best friend. Okay? And if we realize that fact, like I said, what this gentleman doing, I, I support that greatly. Now, I do have a question, though, about the houses and things that you straightened up. Now, what about the areas of the houses that have not been, you, you saw two slides of two houses that were corrected based upon a law and code enforcement? That's great. But now, what about the ones on the northeast side which need to be redeveloped? And it's, for the most part, Mr. Councilman, it's a good thing. I'm getting ready clothes, gentlemen, thank you, and ladies, thank y'all for your indulging. One thing, Mr. Councilman, to you, I've noticed that the youth council center, and of the NAACP Youth Committee, that used, it's a building on 23rd, right about 24th, 25th Street in Martin Luther King, it is a, an almost total ruins. Now, that brings down the northeast side of Oklahoma City, especially a monument, a historical land development as it is. It seems like to me there should be some of these monies that we can do something with to bring this up to par. A youth center, as we're talking about here, on the main street of northeast and an NAACP facility, I mean, it's basically, you can almost walk by and blow it with your breath, not saying you, but I mean anybody, I'm just metaphorically speaking. If you tell me that we don't need some of these buildings straightened up on the northeast side, then I tell you, ladies and gentlemen, something's wrong with the jury today, and I will be bringing this, this committee, or this council, a possible resolution, which I know you have the authority to take and make, based upon historical perspectives, like we do every other thing in northeast downtown, making historical reservations and whatever, and I will be bringing to my city councilman. Thank you all very much for indulging me, and hopefully, you have a most wonderful, pleasant, and glorious day today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Well, we're going to adjourn the Finance Committee and then reconvene the council meetings. Items from council. Mark, we'll start with you, if that's okay.
Yeah, just after listening to this today, it just reminds me to keep emphasizing to our citizens to please, please buy local, local from the local vendors and local retailers. And then the other thing that I found of interesting note, Oklahoma City in the news, Oklahoma City is the number one most romantic city in the nation. You see that?
Thank you. Okay. Todd, no, Larry, James?
On the, when Bob was going through the Development Services, I noticed a picture of Lantana Apartments, and I thought I'd give a little update. They are actually working on the complex, and so it seems like all of the many steps that we've taken to get there has, is going in the right direction, so I'm, I am optimistic that all the demolition and everything that we, that we've done a couple of years ago, well, it'll, it'll have a, a good result, so I just wanted to report that.
Thank you, James. Okay. Jim, I'm going to turn it over to you now.
No city manager reports, we'll have our regular city council meeting next week on the, on the 16th, and then we'll come back on the 23rd for more Finance Committee meetings.
Okay. No citizens to be heard, so we're, we're adjourned.